Okay. So, good evening, welcome to the February 15th Brookfield Board Selectment Meeting. Please rise for the select to leave.
Let me pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, we have to move on.
Yeah, I'd like to do a moment of silence this evening for James Wilson, who is a lifelong resident of Brookfield, and he was a former selectman, and he was also taught at Tansasko in the Cafeteria Division. So, his wife Barbara has served on many, many committees in this town. So, I'd like to do a moment of silence for him.
Okay. So, announcements, winter parking ban is in effect from November 15th to April 1st, from 11:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., and any vehicles in town right away will be taken in and towed at the owner's expense. All right, now, would you share with us the reports on the warrant time?
I'm going to share the warrant, the report on the warrant set aside. I was in looking at the logs, they go last week, and they were approved. The fence warrant for $2,822 for $373,809.71. A payroll warrant for $2,922 for $186,397.44. A withholding warrant for $2,922 for $30,461.86. A withholding warrant for $1,2722 for $37.51. And a payroll warrant for $1,2722 for $60.
Okay. So, let's talk about annual town warrant closing date. So, part of this discussion, and Kelly, I know you had published a schedule, and one of those was that all the departmental budgets were due to you on the 3rd. How did you do on that?
They did amazingly well. The departments, I think all but four got me their budget by the deadline. The ones that didn't wasn't, weren't in contact with me. And I think there, there's two that I didn't, I didn't get one from the advisory committee.
That's really great.
And when I asked them why, they said they granted themselves an extension. And my comment was, except it wasn't due to you, it was due to me, and I didn't. So, your level funded.
How did they take that?
No, no. And then, the other one was just on my award whose budget remains pretty much static, so.
Okay. So.
So, they, they did a really, really good job. And as, as they came in, I forwarded them as soon as I got them. I opened an email with one or got a copy of it. I then forwarded immediately to advisory, so they all got the budgets basically when I got them.
Okay. And it looks like you're looking for us to vote on 3/22 as being the closing date for the warrant.
So, what we need to do is we need to set the annual town meeting. So, this was a proposed schedule if the annual town meeting is going to be on May 6th.
Right.
And I started with that date and backed out. We needed to post the warrant a week before, which is the 4/28 date. And then, I want to do a public budget hearing so that people can come and ask questions about the budget prior to the meeting. Then, the budget has, the final budget, well, just the budget, wait a minute. The warrant needed to be completed after you vote on it and then sent to town council no later than the 7th of April. That meeting, the Tuesday before that is when you would vote on the final warrant. So, with all of this in mind, if we close the warrant on March 22nd, and the reason that we close the warrant is because it's a deadline, it's a statutory deadline for citizens petitions, which means once it's closed, it cannot be opened again because you, you can run up against a citizen's petition. This is why you opened it for them, you need to open it for us, but they have a cutoff. So, you can't reopen it for other situations. So, we need to pick when the meeting is going to be and then work backwards to figure out when the warrant's going to come.
When are elections this year?
They're the Tuesday before that, which is what your town meeting is. Yes, and so, I'm sorry, I'm so excited for that meeting. And I went by rule, by law, where your meeting was on May 6th, would have been the Friday after the election. The election.
They have to be after election.
It could be before the election, but you're going to bounce everything back a full week if you want to do it that.
What is your reasoning as to why you want to do it?
Well, just for anybody, like, for instance, what happened to me the past two years. I joined boards two days, like, I signed the paperwork with the clerk two days before the, the meetings, the annual town meeting. I had no clue what was going on because I lived in two days.
But, yeah, but this past year, though, it was in, was it late June we had it?
Yes, in, in June.
It was in the June, so, you know, you have enough time, but I, I, this is something I've always said. It's, it's kind of hard when a new person come in, just only being on for four.
Right, and we did, and we did actually get, we did actually get rid of that bylaws. I guess the, the question would be for us, right? And I almost don't, I almost don't want to vote it tonight. I'd like to understand, besides the budget, what activities or warrant articles do we even, like, do we have any bylaws in the work from, like, the planning board?
We do, yes.
And, and like, how does their timeline look in terms of alignment with, can they make it for May or not?
And that's, that's a valid question because I believe the planning board only needs once a month.
Right.
And because I've set such an aggressive timeline, I was speaking with Sharon earlier, that we wouldn't be necessarily be able to get the changes to the zoning bylaws in time.
Right.
So.
So, then it becomes a question of.
The other bylaw issues that I've seen, I'm sorry, I need to interrupt. That's kind of going, pausing, but. The other bylaws that people have requested, I have a very long list, but I write the warrant myself. I don't send it out to town council to write, I write the warrant. And the bylaw changes, one of the suggestions was to change selectmen to select board throughout the entire document. That's a very easy, one sentence, basically one paragraph article that'll take care of it throughout the entire bylaw. That's not a big deal. The substantive ones are going to be anything that planning would want to put in.
Right. So, that's like, that's, that's one concern that I have is that I want to make certain, and I, and I don't know, is a month enough of a difference? You know, is, is a month enough of a difference for them to deal with any of the bylaw changes that we have for them?
Right. So, will we, I could ask Sharon?
Outside of this meeting, so.
What timeline do we look at for completing their bylaw?
Yeah. So, let's check on that. Is there?
But as long as they, they have a bylaw in place that can still go, we can put it in the warrant, and the only thing that they would, I mean, if they're caught, because I, I agree with you. I would like to see the warrant closed on 3/22/22. But if they already have a spot where they're going to put the law.
You mean a placeholder?
A placeholder, is that all right?
Well, it's, it's okay with me. The problem is that it has to get to town council no later than April 7th. So, their warrant article has to be fully written and approved by April 7th because that's when it would have to get to town council, and this meeting is a week, and then we, she needs two weeks, and then we need a week for it to be posted. So, all of this stems from the meeting day counting backwards.
Yeah, we would have Sharon if they probably have enough time to do it.
Well, I don't know, when's your next, when's your April meeting? It's the first Wednesday in April.
It's the 6th.
It's the day before, and that's when they would be finalizing their, their warrant article. So, this, the timeline would not work in that instance. So, we, we'd have to bump it if we wanted to include that, which I don't have a problem with that. I was, I was simply trying to. So, when we get the meetings done earlier in the year, if there is a weather issue or a health issue, you have a much bigger window than you do if you plan it for the end of June, you can't.
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to plan it for the end of June. I was thinking maybe the first weekend, June.
Call it a month.
Call it a month, and then that would, it would put us at the 3rd of June, and that would give us.
So, then what night would you talk, the Thursday or Friday?
It's a Friday.
It's a Friday.
Yeah, remember, we tried the Thursday, and the Thursday wasn't too bad. I think people kind of liked it. That's what we did last year.
So, you want to move to June 3rd or the first full week, which would be June 10th?
I was thinking, well, you know, the problem, yeah, so Memorial Day is what?
When's, when's graduation?
Yeah, when's graduation?
Usually, I think it's usually the first Sunday in June.
Can we look it up?
That's June 3rd.
So, they might be, they might not allow anything to be used the weekend before.
But if it's nice, if it's nice weather, the whole, I'm fine.
Yeah, if you can't find a town meeting open, then that's going to be nice weather. We're not doing it out of the jam or the, I'm sorry. So.
And are, are we still able to hold it outside the town limits or are we back to having them hold it inside town limits?
I don't know the answer to that question, but I could find out.
Because that may also, to a certain extent, make some of the decision for us.
So, I know when we held at that elementary school, that's the next largest.
Well, I saw we got a. Well, shouldn't we just plan on holding at the elementary school in the first place?
Well, we should, so long as, so long as we can get in there. Have we verified that they are allowing outside groups in there?
Well, I am meeting with a school principal on Thursday, so.
Yeah, we thought we had, and then, then we were able to. We all mixed together at the big hall upstairs.
Then why wouldn't they allow outside groups in the town?
Well, during, during, during certain portions of, of the full COVID deal, they were not allowing outside groups to use anything on the school premises.
Oh.
Yeah, they, they weren't.
That's rather unique.
Like, at Tansasko, they weren't even allowing the pool to be used for a certain amount of time. Like, there were portions in there where only staff could use it, I believe. Unless it was, like, for swim team or something. Like, the, the community opening up the pool, I don't want to say that. Same with, like, basketball. Basketball, they had to do it outside at Lewis Field rather than at the, at the. This is what I saw on the record in the process.
All right, so, another reason to plan this now, so we can find a place to hold it.
Yeah, we can verify. Actually, it's good that we're having this discussion now because we need to definitely verify.
So, did you find one at the school, at the school?
At the school, it looks like, so, school vacation starts the 21st.
But they had two days off, though.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, that's, it gave me the February calendar.
Well, they have them two days off, so their proposed date would probably be the 23rd. Because they have to make up those days, don't they?
Well, they know they're calculated in the school year. If they know, use the number that they calculated, they have it early.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, which is kind of.
And, and with the digital learning, I don't even know if with snow days or anything.
High school commencement, high school commencement is the 12th of June this year.
Oh, it's later, I guess it's a little later this year.
Okay, but we need to know when the elementary school gets up. So. Last day of school.
Yeah, it doesn't say explicitly that really.
But something from you that talked to Capitolia, I'm sure.
So. All righty then.
Has it ever been held during the day of?
No, we talked about that in the prior. Sports, it's sports are still on. Yeah, it's still on.
Yeah, I just know a lot of people have had to duck out, you know, before the town meeting's over because when it goes to 10, 11 o'clock.
And, and that's the challenge that I have with Thursdays, that it's the, you look for more person, school night, and, and I, I know that some people like it, but some people hate it.
Because we did, we bumped around all these different nights for years, but it didn't seem, so we did try Thursday last year.
That's true.
And so, we're going to go back to Friday then?
Honestly, I'm going to tell you from a standpoint of somebody that has to be somewhere at 8:00 in the morning on Thursday. And we can, we'll do the Thursday thing.
Or I hit the links at 8:00, I mean, I dig ready for school.
Yeah. It's kind of, it's kind of brutal, so.
Well, how about then talking, how about doing it then? Oh, we can't, but then the 10th, commencement's a two-day thing.
Yeah.
Maybe go back to June 3rd?
I, I really think June, so, June 3rd is hard because it is the week, it's a short week from, from.
Oh, we can say the Monday holiday.
Because of Memorial Day holiday.
Oh, that's not bad. Holiday actually has their town meeting the day after the morning.
Yeah, so, so, but I think, I think June 3rd is a date that makes sense. Because it gives us enough slack that if something happens and we do have to, like, shift it around, we've got almost 30 days to figure it out.
Okay, so we've got, so if the annual town meeting is June 3rd, then the warrant has to be posted on May 27th. The warrant has to be completed and sent to town council by May 13th, which means you have to have your final vote on the warrant by May 10th. And then the warrant would close on April 21st, like, somewhere in that week?
Okay, that sounds doable.
Yeah, because they have meetings on the first and the third. I would maybe have it closed on the 19th.
Hang on a minute, I need, I need a couple of weeks to get it together.
Oh, okay.
Yep, yeah, they close on the 19th, that would work.
Yeah, I think you, I call it on the 19th.
Do we have a meeting scheduled for the 19th?
So, even though it's closed on that night, that, that means people have to get, need their submissions by the 19th. It has no voting, there won't be time for me to get it to you.
Oh, I understand now.
So.
And so now, we definitely, definitely, I don't like to vote. You also said too that we don't open the warrant, I completely agree, to close.
No, it, it actually, it has to stay closed. It's a serious disturbance to the residents and the citizens' petition, and you open yourself up to liability if you reopen the warrant once it's closed.
We always have, and that's something I've never.
Well, I think part of the reason why we have is I think the prior interpretation of the way our bylaw was written was that we were obligated to open it if we had done a citizen's petition.
No, absolutely not, unless statutory, that has nothing to do with the bylaw. That's the Massachusetts law, that when the warrant is closed, that's a cutoff then, so.
I think that's. And then the warrant, the warrant's posted 7th, 8th before the election?
Yeah, so the warrant would be posted on 5/27/22.
So, we need a motion to set the town, annual town meeting date for 6/3 with the warrant closing on 4/21. Is that a motion we need?
No, of course, no, April 29th.
Or April 19th?
April 19th. I'll go with, I'll go with, I'd like to make a motion for the warrant to be closed on 5, no, on April 19th, and for the town meeting to be stopped for June 3rd on a Friday.
I'll say.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, you would try to change, is that how you want to do, like, a public budget hearing?
Yeah, I, that, that was for, that's my goal, to do that the week, two weeks before the meeting, so. That would, that would fall in line with the 5/13 kind of date-ish somewhere in there, it would be that week, yeah.
I've always wanted to do that, and everybody, nobody was agreed to it. And I think it's a good idea, then people can come into the meeting and know what's going on, and they can vote. They don't have all the questions.
Okay, so, the next thing we have on the agenda is sign the Gloom documentation for the fire truck. What I, what I have before me is a anticipation note for $484,155. Going to be a motion to sign that?
But I have to consider the figure. I would like a motion to sign the fire truck note of $184,155.06.
I'll say.
On favor? Aye. So. Lots of signing. While we're doing the signing, I'll move on to the discussion around placement of streetlights.
I am sure this would be put on the warrant. We have a very, very good daughter who's trying diligently to put a streetlight on her mom because her mom is, is older and she's struggling to see behind the car. There is money in the budget to put up streetlights, but it's a big, neckless article that's put in. I think it was a citizen's petition.
Citizen's petition in 2019, I think.
Well, somewhere around there, yes. And so, I have no criteria upon which to base where and when a streetlight goes up. I would assume that it would go up because there is a safety hazard, there's a need, an intersection perhaps. I don't know what the cost is to put in a streetlight, I don't know. Senior to put in a streetlight, I've been reaching out to National Bridge for meetings and getting really bizarre answers from the person who's supposedly representing Brookfield. First, he referred to the job over in Sheldon somewhere. He, he's responded to someone else through my email repeatedly, and when, and all I asked him is what's the procedure for getting a streetlight put in? And the last time I asked him, so, seeing prior six emails, what's the procedure to get a streetlight put in? He says, it's on the list to be put up. Like, okay, that's really impressive because it's, where's it going? So, in order for me to know how to approach a resident when they come to us and say, I would like a streetlight on my road because it's not far enough. I need you guys to think about this and how you want this handled. I'm not expecting an answer this evening, but I want to put it on your radar, and we need to pick some kind of neutral criteria, although it is a beautiful and loving thing that this woman is trying to do for her mom, I completely understand. But the town is not going to be able to afford to put up a streetlight in front of every senior's home in order, because their vision is here, right? So, I, I don't know how we can approach this.
I was, I was actually wondering the same thing because I've seen, I've seen them kind of pop up in other towns where they haven't been before, then all of a sudden there's a streetlight, okay, that's cool. But I've also been seeing a lot of, like, solar lights popping up. I don't know if they qualify as streetlights, but like, I've seen stop signs, the flashing stop signs, there's solar power, safety, then fuel signs and stuff like that.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, I was, I was curious if, if there were solar options that could be, you know.
And again, I have, I have no idea, we, we don't own the poles, so we can't just say, you know, hey, uh, I was going to say, well, that, obviously. But we, it depends on who owns the pole. It's a law, whether it's a cable company, it's a law to the electric company, it's a law to the telephone company, everybody has to be on board with putting a light on it. It's, it's not just a one-stop shop, so.
Can, can individuals, because.
Absolutely, they can.
Can individuals pay to have poles still put up? I wonder if that's.
I know that there have been residents in other towns who have done it on a private road.
Yes.
I don't know that they can do it on a public road because we own right of way, and then someone else owns the pole.
Or if the pole was moved in enough where it was on the individual's property, and then essentially they paid for it to be put in, they paid for it there, and then that streetlight's on there.
This person who's been calling me has been also contacting the electric company who he's telling them that they can't do it, the town has to order the, the light. That they can't do it, it's on a public road, the town has to order the light, so.
Yeah, for example.
I guess, I guess my biggest concern is if somebody needs a streetlight to get out onto the street and then drive.
That's a valid question.
And, and it's not being disrespectful.
No, it's not, it's a serious safety concern.
It's, it's the nature of, of aging is that, is that nighttime visibility gets really, really hard.
It does.
It's also the nature of living out of a, a city, too, because you have less streetlights and less opportunity to afford few lights.
But what, we did have a lot of red lights, and then I remember years ago when we had an energy crunch, they.
Yeah, limited.
They would take, they weren't right now.
Yep, yeah, my whole neck is of woods.
Wood, like.
Yeah, there are no streetlights.
Yeah.
It's just, you know, there are individuals who have large lights that took light, streetlights, and they're on their property, but they're not actual streetlights.
And also, and also, I've counted residents who have a private light on a private road that they put up, and they just don't want to pay for it anymore, so they want the town to do it now. You pay for everybody else's lights, and then you run into, you can't, you can't expend public money on a private, on a private property, and that whole scenario comes into play, but.
Talking about another community in West Brookfield, our church has three lights on that street wall. But the one where I made, that's a street that runs down, and the church has to pay for those three lights. The town does not pay for them, and I was very surprised to hear that.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I don't know how you want me to, so. I, I don't know how far $2,000 is going to go, because that's how much we have.
They're roughly $350 apiece. We looked into it a number of years ago.
Did you just have them put up, and the electric company comes and puts one up?
At $350.
Wow, that's actually the one that I.
Depending on, depending on the, depending on how, well, that was the price, like, three years ago. And it also depends on what size R we put it on, because there's one that's like $350, and there's another one that's like $790 or something like that. But, but most of them, decent sized one on a particular length R is like $300.
Is this a scale where other people would ask for one?
That's a pole.
I have no idea, and then we have to one check it out, you know, just because I've been doing this so long. You're going to put up a streetlight that may not be directly in front of this person's house because of where the pole is situated, and you may have someone complaining, and then a streetlight shining in their house.
Yep. I, I wonder if, knock out a one, put more on the highway department, because they're swat as it is, but if we could maybe ask them from their just experience driving around, especially bowing at how you, you know, fixes and stuff like that, if they know of any places that maybe could use them.
What's the road that they're looking to fill the street?
Kennesaw.
That's.
Okay, so that's down, it's in the village area.
Yeah, that's.
That's running back to school, or?
Yes, yeah. But I mean, other than the police department, I would think the highway department would probably have the best idea where some could be located. Or, at least as a starting point. I mean, if National Grid is not, as you said with your emails, not the most responsive.
The responses have been bizarre, completely bizarre, completely talking to somebody else, almost.
Yeah.
And I say, and I get the email and I respond like instantly, well, that's really interesting, but I'm pretty sure that's not ever me. Who would you like to talk to and can you ask a question there? And he's like, oh, I'm so sorry, I just read that really quick and then he kind of gives me a little fluffy answer and I'll, he goes, okay.
Now, if we had to have, say, we decided to put a pole up, do we have to have a pole here?
Well, yeah, anytime you have a pole.
We have to have a, a pole here.
But it depends on if there's a pole in the area that.
Well, there is a pole in there.
Yeah, there is, but I mean, as I was saying, a lot of times, people are building new homes, you have to have a pole here and we have to hang where those are.
I don't, I don't have any criteria whatsoever to determine whether or not that this person should or should not have a.
Do you want me to take a ride down Kimball and see exactly what there is, the pole, poles though?
Well, you can, you can do that, but without the criteria as to what the, what, where and when a light should be put up. You can't just start throwing lights up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just, I don't recommend it just though. Not that I, I would, you know, this, this is an area that genuinely needs lighting, but yes, I'll need to put on there.
That's why I was thinking highway department might have a good idea of where necessarily dangerous places are because they're, they're dangerous because they don't have lighting. And then that might at least help us start to set a criteria of danger level, location, lights that are in the vicinity already. Like if it just happens to be where there's a light on one pole and then it skips two poles and then there's another light, like not necessarily.
Yeah, I, I mean, and that would be kind of a, there, there used to be some published studies about like criteria or guidelines.
And the type of.
And, and even the electric companies have moved away from them because there's so much. One of the reasons why we don't have a coherent policy is that there's not coherent guidance about what contributes positively and what may be impact safety in regards to streetlight. Because you, because I hate to put it this way, you can find statistics to support either stance, that more streetlights.
Safer.
Right? Or that fewer streetlights is actually safer because then you have awareness of traffic that's coming versus you lose headlight visibility when you bring in streetlights.
So, LEP versus the.
Well, everything that goes up now.
Yeah, everything now, but if there's existing ones that haven't been replaced.
Actually, I think they went through and replaced a wall in our town back in nineteen.
Oh, yeah, they did, they changed them all.
Yeah.
Like I said, I don't want to have streetlights, so I don't, I don't need any of this.
There's a lot of complaints actually that the LEDs on, that they are.
They're all going out.
No, because they weren't.
Some of them are.
Yeah.
So, some things can come back by another meeting, but we can get them all rolling so like respond to this extraordinary.
I don't know, I don't know if anybody still has Tim Rowland's contact information.
Is he still, I thought he retired.
Did he retire?
I think he's retired.
Okay. But he might have an opinion. Now that he's retired, he might have an opinion.
Tim Rowland, he's, he works for the.
He used to work for that, for that national working.
I can look and see.
He was down on Quaylock.
He might be willing to at least point us in the right direction. Okay. Are we done with that discussion and we need to add to that?
I think we have.
Okay. Appointments. We've got me to the WRTA committee. We've got Cassandra Buckman for Assistant Analyst Control Officer. And then we've got Kayla Report for EMT training. All of those with the terms ending on the thirty fifty twenty two.
I'd like to make a motion to, like, have Beth Coslin as the WRTA advisory committee. And Sandra Buckman for the Assistant Analyst Control Officer. And Carla Report as a trainee of EMT. And all of these terms will be starting on June thirty twenty twenty.
I'll second.
On the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I do have a question on appointments, just since we're on appointments. At, it was in January, the January meeting, when we were talking about appointments for liaisons to these schools. I was appointed the liaison for the elementary school and I've not heard from the elementary school at any point.
Well, did you reach out to them? They, they posted.
I saw that posted this stuff, yeah.
Right, but they posted public meetings as the liaison, you would show it to the.
Oh, yeah, I sent it going to public meetings.
Okay.
But it's never been like, yeah.
Usually.
We did reach out, you remember we won, I think Beth was serving as one.
Yeah, I recall that.
Okay, so we wanted to know.
Yeah, when I did, usually the superintendent will reach out and let you know what to mean.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything and I was unsure who to contact until I saw the, the post for the public meeting that they had, which I was planning to attend anyways.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'll reach out to the superintendent then.
Are you for the elementary school?
Yeah.
Then I would reach out to.
Oh, president, sorry, yeah, I'm superintendent.
So, we've got, I thought we were going to quit voting these with regards to permits.
Did you make a motion to do that?
I thought we did.
I thought whenever you made a motion to do that.
I thought we did.
Like two, two or three weeks ago, so.
They made a motion to stop voting on those, to just, I don't, I remember I did this motion, I was sitting over.
I don't think you voted because I don't see that.
Because Adam was in the screen and I was doing this.
Right. So that was the last meeting.
I don't.
Okay, so do we want to go ahead and make a motion to cease bringing these into the meetings and authorize the, do we need to authorize anybody to approve them in the system?
Karen's want to go in and click yes as soon as you guys decide. You sign it and then she, it's all, it's all electronic, you don't even need to sign. That signature is just telling me that, that yes, I can click approve. So that's.
I've always wondered about this because we, we approve them without seeing what the head office is on the calendar, so.
Yeah, I do a spreadsheet with all that. I just, and so it would make sense for her to be the person for that.
So, so can I get a motion to make Karen delegate for approval of special needs permits?
I will, I will make a motion to appoint Karen to be the delegate on the special, to be the meeting approval of special needs permits.
I'll second.
On the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
And also I just want to tell you there's a double check because they all say fight with state, so the state has their own calendar too. They have their calendar and then once they realize it's free, that only then do they send it on to us. So it's not double booked or anything.
Okay. And then we've got two sets of appointment minutes, meeting minutes, we've got the.
We can't release the exact session minutes yet. We haven't heard formally from the police in their northern part of Louisiana. I have heard informally that they're not going to go any further. But I would prefer to have a formal, for the, for the time to elapse for them to be able to do it, which I don't think it has.
Okay. So.
So the other minutes are fine, I just didn't want you to release the exact session was at this meeting at this time.
Right, right, and I saw there were no exact minutes in the folder, so. All we have is the, I think all we have is the opening minutes, and that's correct.
There's two sets in the old set.
Two, one and.
Yeah, your, your meeting earlier this month and then an old set probably never two thousand and fourteen.
Right, so, so can I get a motion to approve these two sets?
I'll make a motion to approve our selection meeting minutes of two nine twenty-two and eleven three fourteen.
I'll second.
On the favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the final thing on the agenda is.
Do we have the calendar here, we're going to go meeting?
What?
Oh, I thought.
No, the calendar was just, was just, I think it was going to be made and we got a track, so that's why.
There's still, there's still the first and third, right?
Yeah, first and the third, but I was going to, yeah.
And then we have, the last thing on the agenda is policy handbook and then other course of point benefits.
Just, I didn't give you the video of the course of point benefits?
No.
Policy, alright. What would you be handing it on the council on the old campus? Policy.
Okay. I think if you want. Well, I'm, I'm channeling the personnel board and this is something that we've worked, probably worked on for six years together. You know, taken a lot of time. And then when Kelly, when Kelly wanted to be appointed, she's done life labor. And she's gone through a lot of it where town council had approved different things and Kelly said that they shouldn't have been approved and she helped us to add on. So I think this is something that we've needed a long time and employees. So this is, I mean, a quick, you know, I don't know if we have to actually have a selectmen's bulletin.
No, it's just to let you know that it's done, it's ready for printing.
It's done, it's ready for printing and it's soon as everything else, that Amy is going to start getting them out. And everybody will have to sign on that when they get them.
So, so we'll have records and receipt and.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, records and receipt. And Debbie even said something too about getting the access too, that they have, they have the.
Well, that, that's just part of being a municipal, well, you're three iterated on a handbook, you're responsible to do that.
And, and some of it is plain, you know, people will, you know, they should understand, it applies to everyone, even if, you know, our people who have been here.
Will this be given to all board members?
Yes, this does, because everyone elected, appointed, stipend, no stipend, part-time, full-time, everyone's considered a employee, so everyone gets one, yeah.
Then, let's see, I want to see everything that made the list real quick.
We worked a lot of long and hard hours on it. We went through all different towns, communities that were rough, you know, with different things and we worked, you know, different things out of their handbook. And then Amy thought, I'm not happy to, Amy was willing to come on with us too. So we have a whole board.
Which is curious.
With regards to the longevity stipend, we are including that in the budget.
No, it starts in FY twenty-four.
But it's right in this.
Give us some of the plan and get the right information.
I'm saying to that, this is a lot smaller than our corporate ones.
It was a lot bigger.
Yeah, it was bigger.
We pared it down a little bit.
Yeah, but larger doesn't necessarily mean better.
No, and actually.
It's usually more confusing to.
I'm not actually a fan of employee handbooks because it can be a trap for the employer, actually. Very, 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 very clear in there that this is not constituted contract. And it's repeated in multiple locations that you are still employed at will unless you are actually contracted.
Yes, so. Okay. Great. Are there any remaining areas of concern or we just, we're good to go to just adopt it because it was going to the town yet?
Well, I think we're good to go to adopt it. I tweaked the dress code a little bit.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
I did see that.
Yeah. And, and what else did we do? There wasn't really that much that needed to be done, there was, there was a couple, there were a couple of policies that were outdated because when it started, they weren't actually required anymore, so.
Right.
That was, that was tweaked a little bit. And there were several policies actually that were missing that are new dated by the state of Massachusetts, so I put those in, so. I can't remember what they are for some, I think there were four of them that weren't, that were missing.
On records, training and things like that, like all of the.
The list, we're in information security.
Yeah, like the computer, the IT training.
We got all of that.
The ethics stuff, the Corey, Sori, if those haven't been done, once this is implemented, people will have to do it, or a different type of this.
Yes.
This is the first time we get an employee.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm just curious because, like, I, I see emails coming in.
So we're the ones who do the Corey checks on absolutely everyone, from my understanding, it's not going down there at all.
Yeah, Corey, yes, correct.
But you know, you know.
There was, there was a round of them done like seven years ago.
Yeah.
Yep, it was, I think.
Sori's in there.
Few of them have been done.
Is it?
Yeah.
We had new employees on one board.
Yeah, for new employees, new employees that have done this.
They request a story.
But I don't think we went after.
After offers.
Had employees who were already employed or had.
Thank you.
I'm sure we did, they did on everybody.
I agree with, I, I never had one.
We didn't, I thought Nick, I thought Nick did one on everyone.
No, I've never, I didn't.
It was just new people that were coming on board.
And who is Nick?
Your phone.
He was a swat man.
He was a swat man this time.
I just think they ran them on certain people that wore awards.
No, I never had any, any.
They did one of them when I first.
I asked.
We didn't have them done with people that were already here.
Yeah, but I didn't have it done when I joined either board. Because I had asked about it, because I have to do it for everything else.
Well, it's usually like, I think, different ones, like, you know, that I hired, like, you know, something like Karen had, we didn't, Kelly had.
I have no idea, someone did one on me, I handed in the paperwork to Hobbie, but I went to Sarah.
Yeah, she usually never.
It was in the treasurer's.
Is Amy going to do that one?
She is not currently the Corey officer, no, and to my understanding, I don't know who the Corey officer is, so.
Well, we had.
I know that the, I believe it used to go down to the fires, to their police station too. And I think he did some, I know Peter's chief is not allowed to, excuse me?
Peter, yeah, I thought he was doing his own for this.
Oh, yeah, okay, so the library typically does their own, PD does their own, but the chief can't do Corey checks on anyone outside of the police station. So, we need to do.
It doesn't make somebody as necessary a Corey officer, though. Any recommendations?
Um, well, I don't want to throw another thing at Amy's plate, but honestly, it falls in HR. I've done it, I've seen the town treasurers do it, or it's had HR do it. It's, I've seen the executive assistants be the Corey officers, it's really wide open to whomever you choose, but it goes with the position, not the person.
Right.
So if you would appoint it to a position, make it part of that position.
I don't mind doing it.
If you need to volunteer, I hope. And then it goes in the department record, which would go into the church's office, yeah. So, it actually makes more sense to keep it in the central clearinghouse, honestly. Because all of the, um, sensitive information comes and goes in that office.
Right.
So.
So the one that appoint Karen to the Corey?
No, actually that's the staff officer, I think, who would like, and it goes to the treasurer. Unfortunately, like you said, probably about the last thing that, that she needs, an additional thing on that plate.
Right, well, it's not, so, the initial Corey checks are, she can probably do them in stages. They, it's not going to be a huge adventure after that because we don't have that big a turnover. Even people have worked here for forty-six years, she knows.
It's just the boards that were.
It's wild, yeah.
Yeah, it's just the boards, I think.
I don't even remember anybody doing on the board.
Hell, we don't even have that much.
No, we're the board.
No, but that's, that's where the turnover is.
But they're totally not done.
Not on the board.
Why wouldn't it be done on the board if they're a town employee?
If they're an elected official, what difference does it make? You can't fire them.
Yeah, wouldn't. Yeah, wouldn't.
I can, I can handle it and they're actually from down on the local officials. I don't think it's a bad idea, but you have no recourse if you don't like the quarry that you have. And if they say no, what are you going to do?
If they say no, they say no, but I mean, I personally would like to see them at least presented in like.
I could, I could see with appointed officials, yeah.
Yeah.
And I mean, you know, do it across the board to everybody, but you, you know, just obviously.
No, I, I understand that the, the, the no recourse, if they say no or something comes back or whatnot. But just as, I mean, if it gets put in, if everybody who's on a board who's elected has a personnel file.
Yeah.
Then it would just be put in their personnel.
They only have a personnel file out there paid.
Okay.
They receive a stipend and they receive a check and they file on that, otherwise we do not.
Okay. But personally, I'd like to see it at least presented. And then it's up to them if they.
I think if the treasurer does take it over, I think, you know, more work onto the treasurer, having to do more on these boards.
Let's, let's do this phase. Let's start with getting the employees done and then let's, let's reconsider in like three or four months. Let's reconsider on the postcards coming through the board. So can I get a motion to appoint the treasurer as the quarry officer, quarry story officer?
Um, I will make a motion to appoint the treasurer as a quarter.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, anything else for this evening? This is on the agenda, we just took a real high level on the other post employment benefits that we can think on it between now and next week.
So it's my understanding that the town adopted the law to provide other post employment amendments to have town employees. But there's no trust set up, there are no trust documents, there's no investment fund for this place. And in order to, yeah, I voted some money actually into a stabilization program. Right, but there's a whole lot of.
But there's a little structure to it, not fun, isn't it?
Unstaturedly, so the, what we need to start doing is getting the people what together and done.
Okay.
I have some of the trust, the trust investment policy, Amy gave it to me for you guys to review. And I'm going to include it in the emails to Karen, so that's what should have been in the package, so I apologize for that. But that's the first step is having a policy and then using the trust documents to be sold outside. And it is actually a warrant, so it's to go on in order for us to properly invest the OPEB money. You don't just throw it in a stabilization account. It's supposed to be a vast.
Understood, understood.
So this is just to kind of get everything started and make sure that the town is on the right track to have a legal OPEB fund so we can invest the money properly. So we can fund it properly.
Stabilization is typically invested, though it might not meet the same criteria.
No, it is not. It is, it is a completely separate account. OPEB is its own little, little bubble of, of funding. And we need an actuarial.
Assessment.
Assessment done and we're looking into what that's going to cause. I think it's probably going to run. The initial one's usually pretty big, so like fifteen thousand for your initial one and then it's going to be like, because you do it every two years. So you do a big one, a little one, a big one, a little one, a big one.
I know there's, I know there's several communities outside the Cape that have, have elected to do theirs through kind of some collective, collective investments.
Yes, well.
And they get their actuarial work done as part of the management of the box.
There are several counties and districts, I know Berkshire County has, they went out to bid on actuarial services for the entire county, which got a great deal, I think they paid seven thousand one year and then it was a thousand the next, and then seven, one, seven, one. But the initial one's going to be bigger.
Right.
So that's kind of a rough estimate on the initial cost and then next year it'll be like two thousand and then. Unless, unless the costs have gone up exponentially, I have not seen an actuarial assessment bill for two years, so.
So is that something that you're already targeting on the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's already included in the budget, so.
I know we talked about closing the warrant, but can we have, can we start informal drafting of what we think is going to be on the warrant besides?
Well, yeah, the closing of the warrant is just for other people to get outside articles to, to the board. So it's going to be, it's going to be pretty much put together before it closes.
Right, well, yeah, I mean, that's, that's the thing is that other years it's been very willy-nilly, but I don't want to say willy-nilly. It's been kind of trying to keep track, but it's, it's been all over the place. So if we can start to.
Probably didn't have somebody in-house who could write it though.
True.
So that'll, that'll make a big difference, but I'll, I'll write the whole warrant start to finish. And town council will get their fingers on it two weeks before the meeting, or two weeks before it's proposed.
Right. So, okay.
And I have a folder I started the day I started working here. Yeah, it's filled with notes and things that need to be addressed for the town meeting.
Do we, um, is, is that one of those something you can share our next meeting? Just like, or do you know some of the items you want to hit as part of this town meeting?
Well, there are a lot of little things, things that I've been asked by, I'll go get my notebook if you want. I mean, it's part of, it's part of the meetings.
Yeah, well, it is, yeah, actually it was, it's part of the meeting, it was on the agenda, just to talk. I don't know, do you guys have any interest in covering it today or just hold on until?
We'll.
Okay.
Okay.
Could you forward the OPEB information though after this meeting so that we have a chance to review it? Let's go ahead and put it up back on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yes. I will, I'll scan and then send them all over to you.
That'd be great. All right, awesome. So can I get a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn. That's seventy minutes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.